The call of meeting to order. Dr. Rock, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mrs. Harden?
Here.
Mr. Jeffries?
Here.
Mr. Hack?
Here.
Mrs. Grassi?
Here.
Mr. Matt?
Here.
We all raise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, Mr. Kalas for special reports.
Yes, we have quite a few actually tonight. I would like to start with Mr. Liatzos, Principal of Riverside Campus. He has some present, short presentation to give over some great things that are happening in the schools, both individually and with academic team that we have here. Mr. Liatzos.
Some thank yous, Kales. Tonight, we'd like to recognize some students that have done some outstanding things recently in our school district and in our community. First, I would like to recognize Senior Nathan Forensick, who was recently named an Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America. The Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable from the Boy Scouts of America. Since 1911, more than 2 million young men have earned Eagle Scout rank. Among other requirements, there is an extensive service project that the scout plans, organizes, leads, and manages. This is Nathan. The project is intended to benefit the scout's community, any school, or any religious institution. Eagle Scouts who enlist in the U.S. Armed Forces may receive advanced rank in recognition of their achievements, and some colleges universities offer scholarships to Eagle Scouts. Nathan is a member of Boy Scout Troop 62 in Painesville. His Eagle Scout project involved a beautification project at Painesville United Methodist Church, in which he removed an old placelet on church grounds and converted the space into a sitting area and a place for meditation. Congratulations, Nathan. Next, the Riverside Campus would like to recognize and congratulate 8th Grader Logan Bell, who won the Tri-County Spelling Bee and will represent Riverside High School and this area in the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC on May 22nd through the 26th. Logan? Logan is also one of 19 students from Ohio that will be competing in the National Spelling Bee. Nationally, 274 students will be competing in the Spelling Bee. The finals will be carried live on ESPN on May 26th, and hopefully Logan will be there.
Stand up front. Look at everybody. Liatzos.
Next, we'd like to recognize one of our academic teams who had a very successful year this year, our Academic Decathlon Team. And I'm going to bring up Ms. Kowalik, who's the Academic Decathlon Team Coach, and she will speak more to their accomplishments. Ms. Kowalik?
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Here we have our Academic Decathlon students, all adorning their medals, and they had a very successful season. They start in September. They have a set of curriculum that they purchased from the group that runs USAD Ohio. So in addition to their everyday studies, they're also studying a curriculum on the side of a wealth of material, which they compete in 10 areas throughout the school year. At various competitions with local groups, as well as then states in March. And so they were able to participate in states, and as you can see, they won lots of individual medals. We placed first in our district in regionals, and we placed in various categories individually at states. So this year, they raised their scores 18 percent from last year, so they were doing extremely well this year, studying really hard. And we have 14 students. A few couldn't be here tonight, but we have a lot of great, really dedicated kids who actually enjoy studying, believe it or not, and are willing to go above and beyond to really speak well for our school's academic accomplishments. So I'll let them introduce themselves or say something about themselves that they enjoyed this season, and they'll take your time.
Hello, I'm Christina Ransell. I'm junior. Throughout my four years in Academic Decathlon, I have loved learning new skills such as how to interview and how to speak in front of a large crowd. And I've also loved meeting new people and new students and just pursuing the quest of learning, and it's just a lifelong skill. My most, the accomplishments that I am most proud of from this season are my two silver medals in music, because I like to major in music, and I medaled both the regional and state level this year. Hi, my name is Christina Julius. I'm a senior currently, and then I'll be attending the University of Central Florida in the fall. And so honestly, I just made a lot of great friends. This is my first year ever doing Academic Decathlon. As long as Christina said, I've gained a lot of skills. I was able to get three medals in regionals and as well the state competition, so this one's a plus. [applause]
Hi, my name's Marissa Polito. This was my third year with the Academic Decathlon Team. A lot of people don't really think that I'd be good at Academic Decathlon, because I actually hate talking in front of crowds. But this year, I haven't received any medals, but I mean, I look pretty decorated. And I really enjoyed Decathlon because of the friends I've made and all the good experiences I've had.
Hi, my name is Christian Rosa. I've been in Academic Decathlon for three years now, and ever since I started the program, I've felt welcomed in the program. I have definitely learned a lot in various different areas of, I don't know, science, math, especially speech and interview. I've learned a ton. This year, my most, my best personal accomplishment was this gold medal right here. I won it in speech, an area that I never thought I would ever medal in. And I managed to do it. I worked really hard. I got my speech ready, and well, here it is. So I hope to advance, continuing forward, and I love the program.
Hi, my name is Zachary Leopold. I'm a freshman, and this is my first year competing with Academic Decathlon. I'm really grateful for this experience and getting to know all these fine people, some of whom I knew before, but some of whom were new to me. I'm probably most proud of not meddling in a subject for which I studied the hardest and meddling in several others, but... And not collapsing in a givring wreck when I had to give my speech in front of several hundred people. I had a really great time. I'd like to thank Ms. Kowalik and everyone on the team for coming out, and thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elijah Haller. I'm in 8th grade. I wasn't, I couldn't attend the regionals and states, but I am glad that I made lots of friends and learned new things, and I hope to continue in the future.
My name's Bryson Durst. I'm a sophomore. I've been doing this for three years, and I would say my favorite medals are probably my medals and, my gold medals in essay and social sciences. My favorite things is getting medals in subjects I never thought I would medal in.
Hi, my name is Noah Levy. I've been in Decathlon for three years, and so far, I haven't really accomplished much with this one medal that I'm worried about. But I just kind of like all the improvement that's been going on for the past three years. Like when I started out in 8th grade, I could, I struggled to get, let's say, like 2,000 points in a regionals competition. This year, I went into states with 4,000, almost 5,000, and reached, I probably had one of the greatest speeches I've ever written.
Hello, I'm Zach Levy. I'm a sophomore. I've been in the Academic Decathlon program for three years now. What I'm most proud about about this program is that this season has to have been the most, the one where we're studying the materials that we've received, the extracurriculum, the most over any year that I've ever been in, and it's shown in all of our performances collectively. Our points have gone up, we've gotten more medals, we've gotten closer and closer to getting exactly what we need to get.
Hi, my name is Josh Levy. I'm a senior, and this is my third year competing in the program. My probably favorite moment of the season was being able to win gold medals in math, both states and regionals, but my most memorable was probably finally being able to pick as a speech showcase at regionals, where five speeches are selected to be given in front of the whole crowd. I then promptly stood up and forgot my entire speech.
As you can see, they work really hard, they have a great attitude, and they're looking at fundraising right now. I'm gonna shame, shame the plug here. It's very interesting buying flowers, plants, fruits, vegetables. Feel free to see me or one of the students at point.
What was the topic this year?
It was India. Next year's World War II.
Thank you, guys. I want to thank Ms. Kowalik. She was new to the team this year. She was new to our school. She embraced the program, did a great job with the kids, so hand it around. Okay, next person I'd like to bring up is Dean Vader. Mrs. Vader?
Do you stay here or do we want to come down there?
Come down.
I think he's gonna do that to me. Distinguished Board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Dean. This is my lovely wife Barbara. We've been supporters of the Riverside School District for almost 20 years now. Our son and our daughter-in-law are both alumni, and by the way, to the teachers in the crowd, they are both highly successful, so thank you for the education they received. We appreciate it. About a month or so ago, we received a call from the principal at Madison Elementary, and she heard that I was a veteran, and she heard that I was in the American Legion. And while she was at the Madison School District, no, please, please. She had a program there that was run by the American Legion that taught flag etiquette and the Pledge of Allegiance, which we already cited a few moments ago, to the first graders. And she wanted to know if that was available in the Riverside School District. Well, my wife and I went ahead, we sponsored that, and we made it available to the Riverside School District, and we have done three schools already, and the rest are scheduled in May. During the course of that, though, Joe...
Mr. Glavine.
Partner in crime. He calls me up, and he says, "I understand, you're in the American Legion, and we have a problem. We have some very old flags in our classrooms that need to be properly disposed of. Can you take care of that for us?" So we came up, and we took a look around, went some classrooms. Some didn't have flags, some of the flags were in such bad shape that it was almost a shame that they were being displayed. So after a few minutes, we decided, my wife and I, we're gonna go ahead and donate 100 flags to Riverside School Campus for John R. and Riverside. So this afternoon, 100, actually 99, the flags got delivered today, and I will tell you, they are 100 percent American-made. So Pete, that's for the schools. Now, we will also dispose of the flags properly at a ceremony. The one other thing that I'd like to take, I have a very busy itinerary tonight, so, and I have a tendency to go on and on, because I'm a salesman. The other thing that we do do is, and I'd like to invite the Board and all of you on May 14th, the Lance Corporal David Baker Memorial Scholarship fundraiser. For those of you that aren't familiar, Lance Corporal Baker was an alumni and graduate of Riverside in 2006, and he made the ultimate sacrifice in Afghanistan in 2009. In 2010, my wife and I started the Lance Corporal David Baker Scholarship Fund. This is our seventh year. To date, we have given 12 scholarships to Riverside graduates. So we would love for you all to come out on 14th and help support this worthy cause. And I'd like to make an invitation to the Board. It is a live radio broadcast, and we'd love to have one of you all come out and go on the radio and talk about how great the Riverside School District is. Okay? Folks, thank you very much for your time. Whoever told the photographer to be using an iPhone?
Dean, one is out. The 14th one is out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Kalina. We actually, I own a printing company. We got flyers, so whoever would like one, we'll put them here. Thanks, Jack. It's May 14th at 1 o'clock. We have a comedian this year, we have a great blues band, it's a really lot of fun. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like to call Ms. Walker up front. I'd like to talk a little bit about program where we partnered with Auburn Career Center. You're gonna do that one, too.
Okay.
Because, you do it second, because we're gonna segue into Superintendent Maggie Lynch, who will talk about Auburn as well, so.
All right. Actually, the principal at Auburn Career Center and I took out in the fall and talked about the possibility of coming together a program for, with Haddon Kids and Auburn students, to try to teach them a little bit about careers. And then I worked very closely with Judy Felton, the school counselor, throughout the year. We presented it to county meetings, and we organized something that has turned out to be an incredible experience for our 4th graders. Our kids had the opportunity to have Auburn career students and actually really high school kids come over and talk to them a little bit about different career opportunities, and then give them an interest inventory survey, where the kids figured out what they would be interested in, and we had some nice dialogue about that also. After that, the kids took a trip to Auburn, and we just did that last week, and Mrs. Malakar, our curriculum director, Mr. Schlick, our assistant superintendent, and Mr. Kalas, our superintendent, all showed up to see what was happening. Many of the Auburn kids participated in that, and they exposed our kids to what happens in culinary arts, horticulture. The kids got to plant flowers, they got to look in the greenhouse, and then Mrs. Malakar and I got to go back and spend a lot of money at the greenhouse as a result of that. But then in the afternoon, they got to go to probably about 10 different stations and learn about automotive, experience a 3D printer and a laser printer, learn about educational careers. It was just an incredible experience, and it far surpassed my expectations. It was amazing. Next week, we have six people coming to Haddon, just business people throughout the community, talking to them about career options. So it's been an incredible experience, and I'm thrilled that we were able to pilot that with Auburn, and already tweaking it and making some changes for next year. And we've shared that with some of the community, some of the principals throughout Lake County, too. We'll be piloting up sometime in May, hopefully, to share the final plans and what happened. So that's very exciting. But we also have something else very, very exciting to share about Haddon. I have lots of things, I could talk all night, but I think that Mrs. Kalas would probably cut me off. We have some 2nd graders here, and Ms. Philars, our 2nd grade teacher, who put the kids into a math program online. It was a free program. It's called the Ten Marks Math Madness, and it was a competition for the children to participate and do some math problems. And I'm gonna let her explain the details. They did such an incredible job that during the six-week challenge, in week number five, they actually ranked first place. And this is nationwide, with thousands of classes. So when Ms. Philars called or texted me and called me on that Sunday and said, "Oh, my gosh, we're in first place," we both started talking about how we can motivate the kids, what we could do, how we could celebrate with the children. And Mr. Kalas came in first thing Monday morning, and Mr. Schlick was there throughout the week, and Mrs. Malakar came in to visit the kids, and Mrs. Luskosik, our math coordinator for the district, came in, and I invited one of our board members. I didn't extend the invitation, everybody, I thought just one person, and I asked Mrs. Harden to come in, and she came in to talk to the kids and just to celebrate with them. I'll let Ms. Philars tell you about the final ranking and how the kids did. I am delighted and so thrilled at how hard they worked and all the time that they put into this, not only in school, but at home, late at night, on the weekends, and things that they gave up personally to devote to doing more problems and learning more about math. It is just incredible what these kids were able to accomplish under the supervision and guidance and support of phenomenal teachers. So I'm very thankful to Ms. Philars for putting this together. And I'm gonna let her talk a little bit, but I want to say that the two of us also worked together to get a couple of community members and parents from our building to help to do something to celebrate with the kids. And our three kids in the audience tonight, we're gonna come down and talk, get to hear firsthand how we're going to celebrate and how we're going to recognize them. So the people that have helped us with that are Dan Luskosik, who is Karen Luskosik's husband, and she's our math coach for the district, Marcus McHaleb, and Matt Dietz. Matt Dietz works at Lexus, he's one of our parents, and Mr. McHaleb's has a child named Philars. I wish I would have taken some classes with you guys, like your public speaking. My notes are on my phone, I'm not that attached. I'd like to first welcome a couple of my students that were able to come with their families tonight. If you could just step down, I need you guys now. So I have Austin Cal, come on down, Sarah Miller, and Kendall McHaleb. I'd like to begin just and tell you a little bit about what the competition was. It was a competition that's based on a certain percentage of questions that you answer, and you have to have, the standard started at 70 percent, 70 percent participation and 70 percent accuracy, and my kids just took it over, and they went above and beyond that. Starting week one with around, I think it was 82 percent accuracy, and we started our first week at 519 questions on average per student. And we looked at the leaderboard Sunday morning, and we were in fourth place the first week. And I went to class on Monday morning, so excited, and I said, "You guys, we can do this." And Austin says, "Oh, yeah, we got this." So they were going with it, and we set all these goals, and they just more than exceeded all the goals and expectations that they set for themselves, for each other, and their accuracy grew from 82 percent to 95 percent in the final week. And their questions grew from 519 as an average to over 3,000 questions per student on average for the whole class, for the competition. So, pretty amazing. I'd like just to have you guys just take a minute to say a little bit about it before I continue, if you guys wanna say a little something. No, we talked about this, how we would all be a little nervous, but...
Don't mind the camera, it's funny.
They're very competitive, so this is really strange to see them quiet. And like, usually they're jumping and... I don't wanna put them on the spot, so if you guys wanna wait till I'm done, or if you wanna jump in, I would love to. I'm sure I would love to have you say something. Who did math problems before they came to school? Did any of you guys get up in the morning and do any? Which I find absolutely insane. I would find myself just checking the, like, the class average quite often. Refresh, refresh, refresh on a screen. And it would be late at night, and I'd be like, "Oh, my goodness, there's kids on. It's like 10 o'clock, it might go bad." It was just exciting to see just how excited they were, and how many times I had to add questions, because somebody completed the entire 2nd grade curriculum at least three, four times. It was incredible. So they just, they took this competition, and it became more than a competition in my classroom. We built teamwork, we built pride, we were, most importantly, a growing confidence in math. And students, they worked together in friendly competitions, they encouraged each other, and they met and mostly exceeded goals that they set for themselves. As a teacher, my class won before we even hit the leaderboard. We, I realized that we won a sense of belonging, teamwork, and confidence, was more than any prize that they could actually give us in the competition. They just, the way that our kids came together and how excited they were was the best prize. But then, they just kept going, and the competition got fierce, and we found ourselves in 3rd place, in 2nd place, in 1st place, and then final week countdown, we ended up in 2nd place overall nationally. So these kids from a small town, in a small school, became noticed, and I'm so proud that the spotlight is on them. I'm honored to be their teacher, and I would like to thank for all my families in my classroom, just what they did for our kids and how they supported them. I'd like to thank my Haddon family for just the way they treated our class and how you encouraged them. The administrators that came from all over to say, "Congratulations," and cheer us on, it meant so much. A 1st grade class in Buckeye wrote his letters, sent them to us, and called us math wizards, and they just lit them up. Then, it grew beyond Riverside from the support that we got. It went to our community members from St. Tass, wanting to give something to us, and Mr. Luskosik, and the classic Lexus, Mr. Dietz, the manager there. They wanted to do a little something extra for our kids that they don't know about, just to give them something in their hands that they can remember this competition by, because not only did our school, our class win, what did we win?
Fifteen tablets.
Fifteen Kindle fires. Now, each kid will have a shirt for the competition. Our top winners are gonna get a special shirt with Math Madness logo, designed, super exciting. And this one right here, we had over 24,000 questions answered throughout the entire competition. So classic Lexus. Let me read this, so I make sure I'm wording the right thing. But they would like to give four front row, five seats behind first base dugout to a Cleveland's home game, compliments of classic Lexus and the classic auto group. You guys really... How about if you tell us what you, what you enjoyed about the competition? Is that okay? All right, Sarah, tell me what you enjoyed about the competition.
Well, I enjoyed that we all, well, I enjoyed that we all was comfortable to do this competition, and...
Awesome. Excellent. Was it fun? Okay, did you learn, did you learn anything about math?
That will always be a challenge, no matter what.
Excellent. Excellent. That's great. What about you, Austin?
We're all very competitive, and I love challenges with Kindle.
Can you tell me a little bit about how you showed you were competitive and what you did every day? I'm thinking about that whiteboard in your room, and I'm thinking about some blue ink, you know what I'm talking about? What'd you do every day?
Number of goals.
Yes, you created class goals with the help of Mrs. Philars helped you create class goals, and every time I went into that, into your classroom, I would see you moved up, colored a little bit more in, you got higher and higher, and I think your goal for the second to last week was what, 3,000? And then... I said that's enough for two, and then Austin says, "No, that's not enough, 3,000." So, yes, so that's when they hit the first place. So then they came into school Monday morning, and they had to create their goal for the next week, for the last week. What was your goal for the last week, Austin?
5,000.
5,000. That was their class goal. And they, did you achieve it?
And they, did you achieve it?
No.
You were, you were close. Before you left school, and then by that Sunday, yes?
Well, our last week was different, but...
Oh yeah, because they, I'm sorry, they didn't give the final calculation out last week, that's right, okay.
But tell me, how many questions, like, your highest week, how many questions did you have?
6,510.
What about you?
4,460.
Yeah, Kindle?
8,100.
Awesome. All right, good job.
And one final thought, Kendall, who wants to share a little bit, right?
I was really motivated to do it. I was surprised that I could get that high of a score in math.
Amazing, thank you. All the kids.
When I went for the, for the visit to the classroom, kids weren't really interested in acknowledging me at all, which was fine, because they were busy doing their work. They only seemed to perk up when they found out that I was the guy that called snow days. It's not the first time I get a response like that walking through the door. We have Ms. Maggie Lynch here from Auburn Career Center. She's been over at the Career Center for quite a few years now. I have to tell you that periodically I'll visit over at the Career Center for a lot of different events and reasons. And I have to tell you, each time I go over there, I'm more impressed with what's going on. Under the direction and guidance of Ms. Lynch, the place has exploded in terms of experiences. Our district, I believe, still is largest feeder group into Auburn Career Center. And it just enforces how I feel about the program, just being over there last week and seeing all the things that were going on. I was late to the horticulture, because I actually got drawn into the auto body shop, talked to Mr. Torrey for a while. All the kids were working on cars in there, and that seems to be my interest. And even, even horticulture sparked an interest in me as well. But I asked her to come, I believe she's presenting to all the area schools, and she's gonna talk a little bit about what's going on over there and how it impacts our students.
Absolutely. Thank you very, very much. And it's a pleasure to be here, and I have to begin the program with a little bit of an apology. It's taken me a little while to realize that unlike other school districts that appoint a board member to represent their district on the Auburn Board, the Lake County ESC is not really personally engaged with your district. And it's late in coming, but at least the good idea is there, so I'm here today, and I intend to come about twice a year, just give an update on what's going on with Auburn and the success of your students. I love the partnership that we share, and tonight's presentation is to, one, give you information about how many students are participating in Auburn, what programs, and also a new program that our board has sponsored, which is to help advertise College Credit Career Tech Plus. So that's what I'm going to try to present tonight, and hopefully I can get this down. Okay. All right, well, right now, you have 110 of our Riverside students that are with us each day. It's a half-day program, juniors come in the morning, 51, and we have 59 seniors. With this type of a program, there's a wireless thing there somewhere. There we go. Of the seniors, we have 18 seniors doing internships in their various career fields. I wanted to make sure that I mentioned them and the number of companies that they're serving, because I know you're gonna recognize it. Mark Christopherson is over there at Patty Group, Randy's at Han and Sons for air conditioning, HVAC, and then Aaron Hafer is at AGM Physical Therapy. And as you read down, these are unbelievable opportunities. The average salary that these students are earning on their internships is 1025. That means some are making more, some are making less, but that real-world experience is great for their resume. You can see the diversity of the opportunity. In fact, Dennis McCracken has had two internship experiences, going to both Alloy Bellows and Tendon Manufacturing. Many of our students now are beginning to start their internships in the summer of their junior year, so we can get more of them to have different experiences. When they leave Auburn and they get more than one offer, that's great success for them, and it helps them to apply the employability skills such as job interviewing, being able to present their resume. I wanted to mention some of the companies that are supporting Auburn. They affiliate with us, and we have them for every school district, so that we can really make those partnerships work together for the success of students. Just as the presentations before me at Haddon had mentioned, the business partnerships do so much to enrich the educational experience and the success of students. Okay, we're getting there. All right, so you can see we have a lot of Lake County involvement as well, and again, they're representing all of the various career paths. Your current students are participating in a variety of programs. In fact, what this is gonna show is that the 10th grade applications seem to be increasing. We hit a high of 56, 53, 60 this year, and it's a good number, it's stable, solid, and we're going forward. When we take a look at the type of programs, I have left some brochures, I'll leave them in the back, we have 23 different programs for students to choose. So that therefore, when they're coming, they're following the career testing, the inventory testing that has happened in junior high, they've done an eighth grade tour, a 10th grade tour, and we kind of keep interfacing. Of course, the success of this year is beginning to have this program in elementary school. So out of these 60 students that are applying to go in the fall, we had hit a new wrinkle in time. It was called College Credit Plus. Last year, when we had students apply at the College Credit Plus, there was not any kind of a deadline. And so what we had was, for instance, our sports medicine program had 15 students in June, we came back and there were only six. So we learned from that experience, and so now on the applications, we have them listed. Are you also interested in College Credit Plus? Well, that's a good piece of information for us to have, so that if they do choose College Credit Plus, instead of going to Auburn, then we have an ability to provide this opportunity for more students, and not have it be so late that they can't take advantage of the program. So that has been one dynamic. But in addition to that dynamic, we also realized that we should be doing more, offering the students that are so successful, a chance to do academic College Credit Plus, plus Career Tech College Credit Plus. So we began to take a look at how could that happen? Now, one of the things that inspired us is our one-year adult program is equal to half of an associate degree. And so the Career Tech world is beginning to bring that into the community college to bring more of those courses, so that we can accelerate the opportunities, especially with the business partnerships. Right now, the half-day student has a half of an average daily membership fund assessed by our EMUS. But we saw this College Career Tech as an opportunity to strengthen the choice for Auburn and our partnership. We also want to remain the first choice when it comes to career and technical education. We're supporting all of the middle school education that's happening here at Riverside, and we want to continue to strengthen that. So at the March Board meeting, I asked our board, "Let's pay for it." And they said, "Okay." So that, the Board of Education approved the payment of College Credit Career Technical Semester Courses for all students attending Auburn Career Center beginning the 1617 academic year. We know that College Credit Plus was quite an expense for so many of the students when they're getting their tuition paid for, all their books paid for. We don't want to add more burden, we want to partner for more opportunity. So that motion is why I'm here today, to begin to help the community understand that we're trying to help accelerate the achievement that so many of the students are getting here at Riverside. We already had nine of our faculty members teaching at Kent State Geogu, Kent State Ashavula, Tri-C, Lakeland Community College. So we submitted those resumes to Lakeland, and nine of the faculty have been vetted as approved. With that, I do have some daring teachers, not all nine, jumped right into this pool to just start offering these courses, but I can tell it's gonna grow. So we have our computer courses, we have three of our teachers, that they'll get the first Computer and Information Processing, three credits, and then we'll pay for those credits the same way as they get College Credit Plus. Intro to U.S. Healthcare in their junior year, and Med Term in their senior year. And one of the advantages that we worked out with Lakeland would be that they can do this over the course of their year. Right now, the students' academic are kind of crunched under just that one semester-only timeline, but because we're integrating so many lab experiences with it, that they'll have it as part of their regular program. Articulated credit still stays, so what is the difference? In the brochures I'll be leaving you, we cannot offer a program at Auburn Career Center that is not already earning college credit when they leave. So for instance, our Advanced Manufacturing Program has 18 college credits waiting for that individual when they go to Lakeland. Before the seniors leave, they fill out a Lakeland application, we put down all of their grades, they get a B or above, and they have that 18 credits already helping them to accelerate. The difference is, can they have that paid for now, as they're going to school with College Credit Plus, or they still get that articulated credit once they sign up at Lakeland, but it just is one more option to help blend the opportunities for choice for students. At this point, I am very, very grateful, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you may have, but I just wanted to come and thank Superintendent Kalas and his wonderful administrative staff to help work with us, so that we can partner for the success of students here at Riverside School District. And thank you very much for your time and attention. Thank you.
This young man should get a medal for attending this to the afternoon.
Cassie, as always at our board meetings, we do highlight one element, one school per month, and this month is Buckeye, there's a lot of great things happening at Buckeye and at my. Mrs. Smolin, come down and talk about the good things that are going on.
Thank you, Mr. Kalas. So I was putting my presentation together, and I started a couple weeks ago, adding a little bit more and more. My name's Cassie Smolin, by the way, I'm the principal of Buckeye Elementary. And I started adding a little bit more and more each day, and sat down today to finalize things, and I was at about 52 slides. So I figured that might be a little bit lengthy for a board meeting, so toned it down a little bit, but there's lots of good things to share. So the next slide, I broke it down into five focal points. Neither of them are more important than the other, but without them, our school probably wouldn't function as well as it does. I enjoy going to work every day, I enjoy working with our staff, our students, and our Buckeye community. So the first point, I'm gonna talk about our staff and students, our parents and community relationships. Something pretty cool this year that we took on was a Year of Caring, giving back to our community, our PTA, and then our Riverside relationships and our professional development. So the first slide talks about our students and staff, and some of the things that we're doing this year. Caught in the Act of Being Good, students, if they're out and about doing something, even just something about complimenting another, helping somebody pick something up off the floor. We actually had one of our substitute teachers write out a Caught in the Act of Being Good for an entire class, because they were so appreciative of how well behaved and cooperative the kids were. They come down to the office, we read their name on the announcements the next day, and they get a pretty cool Caught in the Act pencil. Lucy Cockens Writing Pilot Initiative is something that's really taken off at our school this year. The teachers, I think, have found great success, but more importantly, the students enjoy writing every day, and their writing's phenomenal. And to sit down and work with them and see their growth, not only from a teacher's standpoint, I have English Language Arts in my background, so I'm kind of partial to see how they grow in that area of the writing initiative. Chromebooks this year, we're getting those, fourth and fifth grade. We've shifted away from testing and computer labs, we test on our Chromebooks, we do cooperative learning groups in our Chromebooks. They're another resource and another avenue that we have at Buckeye that we're appreciative from the high school, earning their cards, and then our PTA also provided us with our own Chromebook card for fourth grade. So we're putting those to good use. I think when you walk into Buckeye, you see that there's a shared culture of success, that there's an opportunity for students to have academic risk-taking in a safe environment. And I think with that, everybody's on the same page, that there's gonna be mistakes, there's gonna be things that we have to overcome, but as a result of it, there's growth in our learning, social, emotional, as well as academic. So the next one, on the next slide, you can see some of our kiddos Caught in the Act of Being Good, we like to tweet them out. There's the little Caught in the Act sheets that they'll turn into the office. Teachers, custodians, nurses, anybody's at their liberty to catch a kiddo in the Act of Being Good, and they do. You can see our Chromebooks in fifth grade being there in our groups, using those in the morning. We have a fifth grade store that sells the necessary supplies to eager buyers. We have some of the kiddos working on, in first grade, actually, the Lucy Cockens series where they're finding catch-up phrases. And then, we just recently took a trip to the Natural History Museum. More kids Caught in the Act of Being Good, second grade did a focus unit on growth mindset. There's gonna be problems to overcome, but keeping open minds and growing from that was one of their topics. And then to kick off Air Testing Week, we had our student board go out and give some positive graffiti, so when the students arrive at school in the morning, they were greeted with some good luck, words of encouragement from their classmates. We have family fluency events, our second graders enjoy showing off their reading skills, whatever they might be honing in on for that particular unit. So what better way to showcase their talents than to invite parents, family, and friends in? And they're on stage, they put on their performances, we had one in the fall, and we had another one in the spring. Fifth grade writing celebrations are pretty cool. We invite colleagues in, their classmates, central office pops in, our reading coaches. It's a big celebration to showcase what they've done, what they've learned, and they're proud. I've never seen anything quite like it, where the students, they want to be the next person up to share their work, and you can hear a pin drop as all of them are going through and reading it. It's pretty impressive, and most importantly, they're proud. So the writing celebrations, they'll showcase where they were at the beginning of the unit, and then the kids are blown away themselves by where they end up at the end of the unit. We have fun, we have fun at Buckeye, and I think that's important, because they're probably gonna kill me for putting these pictures in, so it goes. But we have fun, we kind of taken on the theme of rock stars this year, we're teaching rock stars, we're Buckeye rock stars, and that was us at Halloween. We also have fun at our winter assemblies, we carried on the rock star theme, fifth grade was up there singing, and then you can see our staff down at the bottom. We performed Jingle Bell Rock for the kids. And I think that's important, because when the kids see that their teachers are having fun, they're enjoying each other, that boosts that level of excitement within the school. And there's lots of laughs, lots of smiles, even from our bus drivers. I just wrote to our transportation director last week that I appreciate our bus drivers. They greet the kids by name every time they get on the bus, they ask them how they're doing, and they give little candy canes and little things like that. So our bus drivers are just as much of a community members at Buckeye as the rest of our staff. It takes us to community, we had a Walk to School Day, it was pretty impressive, we had central office there, we had board members, we had the township, it was just a huge community celebration. We met at the crying lab, which is an interesting place to meet, but they were gracious enough to host us, and people kept coming and coming. And we had dogs, we had babies, we had siblings, and it was grandparents, it was just, it was impressive. I got a little choked up, because it was my first month there at Buckeye, and to see all the support that came out in the community was great. And they were involved, we had fun, and I wish I could've walked longer, but we only walked down the length of Buckeye Road. We have Veterans Day assemblies, our writing celebrations, we have great new sidewalks that the kids, we have lots of kids that walk, and to see them trudge through the mud puddles and the snow piles, be unappreciative for the safe routes to school, if I have some permission to provide our kids some safe routes to school. Twitter accounts, we post, and we post a lot, but there's a lot to say, and we want to welcome you into our school and our classrooms virtually that way, by sharing what's going on within our Twitter accounts, reaching out to the community to show, there's lots going on, and nothing's too little or too small to tweet out or to share via the Facebook page. It goes on and on, I mean, there's, our doors are always open to community members. We've had Ohio State University Extension come in, recycling and solid waste education, junior... junior achievement. They like to take field trips, explore what's in our community, and appreciate that. We have our upcoming Bike to School Day, which will be fun. If there's 200 and plus people that turn out on bikes, I don't know what we're going to do. Maybe we'll do a lap around the block or something. I don't know, but we'll see how that goes. We're painting a plow. You saw Riverside do their fantastic job on their plows, so Buckeye's going to get into the game and paint one as well. Community Kindness Day participants in the beginning of the year. We had Buckeye representatives from our school that went out into the community and shared the kindness as well. So there we are, walking to school. Students then were put into a raffle to earn T-shirts and keychains, and then we thanked our trustees by placing that on the sign. I think it's important that they know that we sincerely appreciate their dedication to making things happen. Our Veterans Day Assembly. Mrs. Suts, our kindergarten teacher, was kind of instrumental in making that happen. She arranged our speaker lieutenant.
First Sergeant.
First Sergeant, Daniel Courtney, came in, and I got to dress up in his gear. I think Mrs. Suts should have done that, but I took one for the team. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, so, and the neat thing about it, the kids, you can see stars there. Our hallways were lined with stars, and they decorated them because they were able to share family members or friends that they know that have served in the armed forces. And then just to see everybody stand up and recite the pledge and take part in honoring our veterans was pretty cool. We have a flag that flew over the Capitol. Mrs. Kobach's class had wrote a letter, and we received it, so they hung up our flag. It's a pretty big one, too. Third grade, and what was Mr. Field Township game that you played? Is that who in this picture here?
It was through Lake County Historical Society.
Okay, all right. Continue on. There's our community kindness people. There's our VFW. Lake Metro Parks came in with Adopt a Pet, and they shared it with the kindergartners. And then we have some bikes. Our secretary took a stroll through the school on the bikes to make sure that they worked okay, but that's for Bike to School Day. They're offering some bikes for raffle to some lucky participants that participate. We have fun again. We enjoy collegiate relationships. This was a pretty cool St. Patrick's Day theme. Our pot of gold at the end of the rainbow, in this case, was a lot of food. So staff takes part in those community building opportunities as well. Shout-out boards. We like to encourage each other if they see the, not only students doing something good, but we like to recognize our staff as well. So we have a board. See somebody doing something great, we like to recognize it and stick it up on the board, and people are pretty good about that. We like to share that. Our Year of Caring. Each month is designated for the kids to realize within their community that there's things that they can do, ways that they can give back. Mrs. King, our second grade teacher, has been a vital role in this and coming up with our themes, and I'm absolutely pleased and proud of how well our staff and students have responded. Spoon Timber. We collected donations, and if the kids turn in a donation, they got a spoon to put on their nose, and we took a picture and tweeted it out. October was Socktober, Kid President. We donated socks. November was Movember for Men's Health. Students would make a contribution that we donated, and they would get a nifty little mustache to pose with as their reward. December was Warm Hands and Friendship. January, we care about the arts. We shared our artwork in the hallways, shared it with family and friends, and put that on display. February is my most favorite. Those love letters, and you had to choose somebody within your family, within your community, or within your school, and let them know you appreciate them. So we had lots of love letters going around Buckeye. March, we care about reading. That was our One School, One Book. April, I've never seen so many donations come in. It's probably our most successful one. When you bring cats and dogs into the play with elementary kids, there's a lot of money that's going to be coming in. So we have dogs for the Lake County Humane Society and cat donations for Caroline's Cat Shelter. And May, it's about moms. We care about moms. So there's our kids with their mustache. Socktober. Each one of the kids was holding up a sign to promote it, and then we have Socktober up above it. Spoon Timber. The kiddos putting the spoons on their nose. It was Harvest for Hunger, the donations that we went to. And then you can see the canned goods. Our love letters. Dear Mrs. Suts, you've touched my heart. Whenever I see you, you put a smile on my face. Nothing better than that when the kids share something sweet that kind of takes you off guard. It's kind of the side note. I came from the middle school, but the first week of school, you're lucky I didn't make a 50 slide. The first week of school, I was used to discipline, and my secretary said, "Mrs. Smolin, we've got somebody here to see you," and kind of said it in a stern voice, so I'm going out in discipline mode, and I walk out the door. There's two little first graders with their handmade flowers and a vase that they were giving to me and everything, so took a step back, and it's going to be okay. So our love letters was for February. Right now, we're in the midst of cats and dogs, and there's some more mustaches. Focal point number four, amazing PTA. One of the things I'd like to highlight with them is the One School, One Book. We did it in March as one of our Year of Caring events, and they purchased the books for our staff and students. Nobody was left out when it came to the books, so there's over 400. You can go ahead. They brought in Mentor Karate, and one of our students was featured on the front page of the News Herald, showing off her karate skills. There's a Buckeye Game Night. There's one of our PTA meetings. We have pretty good turnout for the Buckeye PTA. They're pretty involved. Our watchdogs, they encourage dads, grandparents, uncles to sign up, come into the classrooms, and they can just be a father figure and a presence in the hallways, help out with activities, be out on the playground, have lunch with the kids, and just be that positive role model for them. So there's our Wall of Fame. There's a watchdog, Family Movie Night. We all went into the gym and watched The Good Dinosaur. It was a fun night. There's our One School, One Book. At the end, we passed out the books. Mrs. Romberg, she debuted her skills in a hamster ball. The book was about a hamster, so one of our parents donated an inflatable hamster wheel. We had her set up behind the curtain on the stage after we introduced the book, opened up the curtain, and out came Mrs. Romberg. That's what, she was a trooper. And our last focal point, all you can see there, the kids, we would hide Humphrey around the school, and if you've ever had elf on a shelf, another stressor in March. Wake up in the morning, where's Humphrey? So they're finding Humphrey every day. And our last point is our professional relationships amongst Riverside and the PD. Some of our best learning comes from those around us, and we've been surrounded with the opportunity to highlight and showcase and have our teachers, as well as staff, share their knowledge. Central office, their support through attendance, assemblies, our staff meetings, our writing celebrations, literacy alignment, our Walk to School Days, utilizing in-house experts for our PD. Mrs. Ford ran one of our staff meetings. Mrs. Tinney and Mrs. Galant piloting our Lucy Cockens series, so they were featured in the district-wide PD. Super proud of them that they can share their expertise with others. Energy toy collaboration. I see Mrs. Wymer in the crowd here. She put together the opportunity for her seventh-grade science kids to work with our third-grade Mr. Field students and took a trip over there, and they became energy toy critics. And so the kids were pretty impressed to go to their middle school as third graders. A nice lasting memory for them. So there you can see, we have Mr. Schmidt that comes in. He's one of our literacy coaches. Mrs. Hartman, Mrs. Laskozik, all coming into the school, working with our kids on a regular basis. They're almost like an extended Buckeye staff because they're there so often. Congratulations to Mrs. Bickerstaff down in the bottom corner. She, along with Kate Norton, were awarded the Walter Horn Special Education Teacher and Student Award. Our board office, our board, I should say, donate, not donated, but generously provided us donuts on the first day of school, as well as a letter recognizing Buckeye's accomplishments. You can see our literacy lineman. Mrs. Tinney, Mrs. Galant in front of the group at Riverside, and then Mrs. Ford leading our staff meeting at RTI. Some more staff development. Mrs. Wymer, and I see Mrs. Layman over there in seventh grade, working with some of our science teachers in the elementary school. And in closing, we always end our announcements at Buckeye with smile, keep a positive attitude, and make it a great day, Buckeye. Thank you.
That concludes our special reports. I wish she wouldn't have left. If she stayed around a little bit longer, she could have registered her child for kindergarten. Not even with me. So a little bit longer than that usual maybe, so you can work your way back to the table.
All right, that's it for special reports, you said?
That's it.
All right, let's move on to old business. Does anyone have any old business we'd like to discuss? All right, new business.
In our OSBA briefs case that came this past week, there's, I was reading an article on straight A grants, that there's another window open, started on April 22nd.
Plus it's May 6th.
Through May 6th. Mrs. Malacher, did we get our previous grant back with any suggestions or corrections?
Yes, we did.
Is it something that we can pursue and make this deadline by the 6th?
We're planning on submitting another grant, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is that it for new business? All right, let's move on to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. Superintendent's Business Advisory, we just...
Right, what we'll do is we'll have the next one on the same night as our senior project. And I'll get that date for you.
All right, Mr. Miley, Curriculum and Programming, the boosters?
I'm looking for my curriculum and programming. Yes, here we go. Yes, we had a meeting, and it was on March 24th at 6:30. We discussed several items. Just to highlight a couple of quick ones is, you know, the changes that are coming with regards to the block scheduling. That looks like it's going to benefit teachers and students. It's been a long time coming, and I'm glad to see that's starting to happen. And also, it provides the opportunity for many new courses at Riverside. So Mrs. Malacher went through those with us, and a lot of it is going to help out the eighth grade, the eighth grade curriculum because of tradition, over the years, traditionally, the eighth grade was almost like a lost year academically in the sense that not a lot of options were open for them compared to high school and the College Credit Plus programs and the Career Center and different options like that. So on the eighth grade level, there's going to be, eighth and ninth grade, looks like there's going to be quite a few new offerings, which I think is awesome. And for the teachers that are going to put together the curriculums, I appreciate that for our kids, and I just think that the administrative team needs to, little kudos for helping with organizing this and getting the, as a team, teachers and administrators moving towards that completion. We also discussed some professional development strategies that they've been using all year and that something down the road coming with the Google Boot Camp, right? Yeah, so that sounds awesome. So we talked about a lot of things at 6:30 in the morning. It was awesome, and we even got Tom off the working time.
That's right. Appreciate the early start time. Thank you.
And let's see, Booster Liaison, we haven't had a meeting. It's been delayed, so it's coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Mrs. Grassi, Finance Audit, Legislative.
Sure, Finance and Audit. We had a meeting last Tuesday. Luckily, it was not at 6:30 in the morning. It was at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, so we had a little bit of extra sleep. We had four items on our agenda. We talked about the audit of financial statements that were released by the Auditor of State. I don't know if Mike is going to mention those at all, but in his report, so I won't elaborate, but we just talked about those very briefly. They're very lengthy. If anybody wants to read those, those are generally posted online. We talked about our Chromebook program, which is moving forward at exponential rates in our district, which is a good thing. We have gotten some good pricing on Chromebooks, so we're moving forward faster than we have anticipated previously. We talked about the insurance program for the Chromebooks that we had discussed previously, moving to a self-repair program, but with changes in flux, fluctuation in our technology department. We are putting that off for another year, and we will keep that on the back burner for now, and so we talked about that. And the last thing that we did was review the five-year forecast for Mike to have that presentation this evening, and we'll let him discuss that at a later time in his report. So that's what we did at our finance meeting. So that wraps that up. Legislatively, there seems to be a lot of things on the plate down in Columbus right now. I just want to touch on some of the things that are going through committees right now. It was actually kind of lengthy, so I'll try and summarize these pretty quickly. The House, the Ohio House passed two education bills recently. One of them was that we will be required to have instruction in CPR and the use of automated defibrillators prior to graduation from high school. The House Education Committee met two weeks ago and heard a lot of sponsor testimony on a number of things that, one would designate October as Ohio Principals Month. There was another bill that would require half a unit of economic and financial literacy in the high school social studies curriculum. Also, a legislator in our area from Yashavula also designated the week before Thanksgiving as Ohio Public Education Appreciation Week. So these are things that are going through currently. We also have some others that I thought were interesting. This was in the Senate. The Senate Education Committee heard sponsor testimony on a bill that will allow temporary legal or permanent custodians of qualified children to apply for autism scholarships, which they have not done in the payoffs. They also passed on a Senate bill which relates to sudden cardiac arrest during youth activities in athletics. They also had committee reports on expulsion of students from school districts, and that was, that was actually kind of lengthy, but it went into a lot of detail on how those things would be changing. The House Education Committee heard testimony on a bill that would require the health curriculum of each school district to include instruction on the positive effects of organ and tissue donation. They also heard testimony regarding truancy. The Finance Committee, a lot of these are not actually education committees that listen to these bills. A lot of these are other committees within legislative bodies of our, you know, legislature and Senate down in Columbus, but they relate to education, so they're relevant. The House Finance Committee met last Tuesday, and one of the things that they did last year was provide a three-day sales tax holiday in August when people are out shopping back-to-school sales. That is probably going to pass again this current year, so you can be looking for that in August. The committee also heard testimony regarding the coordination and administration of College Credit Plus programs. Those are complicated, costing, you know, data, and those things are being discussed, some changes there. The Senate Ways and Means Committee heard testimony on a bill that would exempt property taxes, property taxes from being assessed prior to the development of a piece of property if it is slated for development. So that was interesting. The Senate State and Local Government Committee met and heard sponsor testimony on legislation that would require a school bus operator who files a report, I thought this was interesting, alleging that a vehicle passed the school bus while stopped, to include a description of the driver if possible, rather than requiring a description of the driver in all circumstances. So it's just interesting how some of these things don't even apply to children in our classrooms. They apply to our bus drivers, so I thought that was interesting. And the last thing was that the House Government Accountability and Oversight Committee met and heard sponsor testimony on a bill that would make proposed changes to the agricultural use value for property taxes. So some of our residents in especially Leroy area, he had property that has value to, as an agricultural purpose use, and those taxing things are going to be changing very soon. So lots of stuff, lots of stuff before they go on summer recess, I think. That's why we're seeing so much activity, but those things will probably all be wrapped up maybe before June, so.
Wow.
I know, that's a lot.
Thank you.
Linda, the Highway Patrol, we investigate all school busing incidents and any complaints. So if a bus driver's out there, they run their red lights, we do a total investigation of it.
Awesome.
Only the Highway Patrol does that.
Good to know. All right, thank you. Mr. Heck, Billings and Grounds, Strategic Plan.
All right. We have not had a Billings and Grounds committee meeting since the last time we were together as a board, but as I think many people are aware, we are very likely going to have a levy, bond levy on the ballot in November. So the board has done several things to investigate and... done several things to investigate and understand what some potential options might be as far as where we might build. We've also done some preliminary work on how we might move forward with some of the specialty services that we will need to support the actual bond levy. So, we are doing things that would support that end. As far as Strategic Planning Liaison, we have not had a Strategic Plan meeting since the last meeting. So, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Jeffries, Personnel.
Personnel Committee, there's nothing new to report at this time. We did not meet this month. There's no date scheduled for next month as of yet. Alumni meeting, we met on April 12th. We discussed...continue to discuss the website, the new updates to the website. I encourage everybody to go to the website to take a look at it. And they're always looking for new members. There's going to be an alumni picnic. That's going to be August 13th. And our next meeting is May 9th. And we currently have the Board of Alumni Association here, present with us in the audience. And they will talk to the board here shortly.
All right. All good?
That's it.
All right. Thank you all. Superintendent's Report, Mr. Carlos. Are you behind us? I don't think anyone wants to look at my head.
Just real quickly, I just want to update the Board and the community on a couple of items. One being our Facility Plan. We already conducted facility presentations for our trustees at Haddon, Melbridge, Riverside Campus, Hale Road, Madison, Buckeye. We still have two more to go. One at Lammuth on the 28th and one on May 12th for Leroy. You don't have to be affiliated with those schools to attend. Anyone from the community can attend those. They start at 7:00. So, again, Lammuth on the 28th and Leroy on the 12th. Madison Avenue Elementary update in terms of the suitability of the site. We did take a tour of the property back earlier this month. And I contacted Citco Company, which owns a parcel of land, a three-acre parcel behind Madison Avenue. And I did talk to a family member there that co-owns the business. And he told me that he didn't think it was an issue, that they would most likely sell that property to us. But he needs to talk to his siblings that co-own the company. The next picture will actually show you the site. The square where the school is is the property we own. But we also own the property that is like an upside-down L. That property we own as well, the board. But the property I'm talking about is the one on top. On the adjacent side of the property, it extends further north. We would like to draw a line where that tree line is...you can point to it, Belinda, if you could, for me. Right there, that's three acres. And the reason why it works out to be three acres is the fact that...and we're not asking for any more, is the fact that the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission suggested you have 10 acres for every elementary school that you have, plus an acre for every hundred students that are enrolled. Okay? So, we have about 13 acres over there now. We need another three to make it 16 acres because the projected school enrollment for our new elementaries at this bond is to pass will be about 600 to 650 students. All right. I said that we toured Leroy as well on April 5th. We also did Madison and Riverside. Talked about the three acres. Also, we're in contact with a gentleman that owns some property over at Leroy as well. That too is a three-acre parcel. I was able to speak to him, and he would be willing to give us the parcel as well. We're looking to conduct a suitability study of the property because, to be honest with you, after the tour on April 5th, I believe a lot of us came off of that property thinking that it might not be the best and most suitable property to build an elementary school. And that's just by now the size, not any more than knowing that the property is built on a four-foot plateau and all the water seems to roll off. And if we were to build, it might be in the area where there's a lot of wet ground. So, in order for us to even consider the Leroy site, we're going to have a company go in there. And they will do a Phase 1 environmental study assessment. It'll be $2,000 for that and also a preliminary wetland condition assessment for 800. Any projects, any construction projects that are conducted needs those items first. We need the results of those tests before we even progress. The other property is Concord Cliffs. We put a call into a man named Kirk Klesnik, who manages that land. And I have yet to hear back from him. We were going to set up a meeting at least to explore it. You have to understand right now, the board isn't out there trying to look for land to buy it for multi-million dollars. We're looking at a bond issue that's going to generate about $38 million. We need to make sure that we put it in the right spot. We have to turn over every rock, look at every site that's possible for us, and pick the right place to build these buildings. So, we're trying to do our due diligence and look at a few of these. And we looked at about 24 properties. We've got knocked down to about four. And this is another one. I called the gentleman that owns this. This is a residential property that's just south of Gerbel Road and 608 intersection. And he told me that a developer, a very well-known developer in the area, did offer him money for the property. And he turned them down. He didn't necessarily say no to me, but it didn't seem as promising as I had hoped. I am going to call him in the next week or two and have a further conversation with them over that property. Okay, another item. We have a possibility, an opportunity to build a cell tower on Riverside site. We were approached by American Tower. And there are two things, two options we have. One is to build a cell tower, and one is to put a cell apparatus on top of a stadium light pole. There's pluses and minuses to both. The cell tower must have an 80 by 80 square of space somewhere located on our campus. And you have to have access to get to that for maintenance. The existing stadium light pole would be replaced with a look-alike, and they would reattach the lights about at the same height as the ones that are out there right now. Cell tower can hold more carriers though, okay? So, not only will we get money for the first carrier, but we can also get money for any additional carriers. And right now, the proposal is that they'll give us 15% of $2,000, or about $300 per extra carrier per month. It's my understanding that they can hold about four carriers, five carriers on a tower. On a light pole, he told me that it's typically only two carriers. And then at the bottom, the cell tower is approximately 190 feet tall. It's a single pole. And the light pole is not as tall, but again, it's much more subtle. Not even...I think it's Mayfield and Kirtland one has a tower, one has a pole. I think Mayfield has the pole in the stadium. And if you weren't really looking, you wouldn't notice it up there. This is the term. For one to five years, and it goes five-year terms, $1,500 a month. Yearly rent would be $18,000. The rent per term for five years would be $90,000. It increases, I believe, by 10% for every term. And if we were to go 30 years with it, you'd have...we would have $694,560. And that's just with one carrier, not multiple carriers. So, I'm still in talks with the company. I would like to proceed with having this happen, that we could use the money for some capital improvements throughout our district. Our safety house, the school finally completed. This was started...Bob, where's Michelle? She still here?
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago? Is it eight years ago?
Seven or eight years ago.
Lee Bodnar was the administrator for the township at the time. He was very instrumental in applying for this grant within conjunction in support of the school district. But for people who don't know this, it was $491,000 grant. It allowed us to build, only in Paintful Township, sidewalks and bike racks. And it was just started Hale Road. You have some people using it. Buckeye Elementary with the bike rack there and sidewalks. Haddon Elementary, this stretches to Everett Road, all the way in the back. It's off to the side.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
And the kids are using it for just run every Tuesday afternoon. So, they're really enjoying it. Some kids walk the squad.
Few other things going on. I mentioned it earlier today, that Paintful Township invited the Riverside Our students to plow. I apologize to the students and also to Mrs. Presidi. I wasn't able to get any of the kids. I got the end result. I saw them paying. I didn't think to take out the camera because there wasn't a whole heck of a lot on at the end of the day. They did quite a job. And I also want to apologize to the kids because I did...I don't have a photo of one of the plows on here. It was already on a truck down the road. But they did a fantastic job. I mean, they...I've got to tell you, even looking at the artwork in the lobby, I mean, some of the things these kids are creating is unbelievable, absolutely unbelievable. Couple of things that are coming up real quickly. 28th, we have the other facility plan, like I said, at Lammuth. The 29th, we have Masco Spaghetti Dinner. We have Haddon Silent Auction on the 29th. And then the next slide sums up May. I'm not going to read them all to you, but there are a couple of things in there that you might be interested in. One was the David Baker Memorial Scholarship fundraiser on the 14th at 1:00 at the American Legion Post. Also, we have the Riverside Cares 5K Race in May. And also Prom on the 7th, which is rather early for a prom. But I mean, we've had it second week of May typically speaking. And if you want to see some of these things, you can go on our website and pull them up. And if you're interested, go to a few. That concludes my report.
Mr. Rock, I assume you're using this for the five-year forecast as well? Stand right here then. We have the Treasurer's Report.
I need to take your screen. Hi, Max. This is the five-year forecast. Just to review some of the concepts behind the five-year forecast, what it is, what's in it, why do we do the five-year forecast. Purpose of the five-year forecast from the Ohio Department of Education is to engage long-range planning and discussions with financial issues, to engage the Board of Education, the community, staff administration. Also serves as a basis for the district to certify expenditures. And then the last one is for the Ohio Department of Education and Auditor of State to identify districts with potential problems. What is the five-year forecast? And notice that I put projection in bold and capitals. It's a projection into the future based on the snapshot of today. And that's straight from the Ohio Department of Education. It also encourages districts to examine future years to identify potential financial challenges. It's due twice a year. It's due in October and May. What's in the five-year forecast? Well, a five-year forecast, we're required to report certain funds. The general fund, that's 99% of the business of the school district. That's where you have all your general operations, your staff, your salaries. So, you have the general fund. Any special costs that are associated with the general fund. So, again, you're going back to the general fund. Emergency levies, which we had in the past, but we don't have that now. If you follow our history, our two emergency levies were substituted for a substitute levy. And just recently, a couple of years ago, we passed a permanent substitute levy that was continuous. Debt that would have been classified into the general fund, again, anything that's tied to the general fund should be on the five-year forecast. And then also poverty-based assistance. Next slide. So, what's in our five-year forecast? The general fund is in our five-year forecast. And that includes our substitute levy. That's a general fund levy. The Joint Finance District Fund is included in the five-year forecast because this is a major revenue stream associated with $2.3 million of payroll that goes to core subjects such as English, math, science, and social studies. Further things that are in the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast includes three years of historical information on revenue expenditures. So, when you look at the five-year forecast, the first three columns are historical, and then the next five are the projections going into the future. Five years of revenue and expenditures projected are based on historical trends, financial information, Ohio Department of Education and County Auditor, current and historical information, current contracts, and state law, and current events. Not in the five-year forecast. What's not in there? So, this is good. It's a negative. But the following are not in the five-year forecast. The Permanent Improvement Fund, that's a separate fund. And we had questions in public on that. You know, they say, oh, we just passed the Permanent Improvement Fund. How come it's not reported on the five-year forecast? It's not part of the five-year forecast. It's a separate fund. Also, federal and state grants, those are separate funds. And the bond funds, the prior bond fund that expired December 2015, and the new bond fund that will pass in November of 2016. The Board has various responsibilities and objectives that are related directly to the five-year forecast, such as Policy 6231. The Board of Education will establish a spending plan as required by Ohio Revisco. Spending plan is the forecast. Policy 6810, the Board of Education has a responsibility to ensure full value of the program to the community, to the taxpayers. Policy 6210, the budget should reflect the objectives of the Board for the children of the district. Okay, so here's our five-year forecast in May. And this is a summary. The main items we're going to look at here is that we're funded for three years. Those are in bold. In the middle, we can see that excess revenue, we're running in a deficit right now after four years of running within current revenue, where our current revenue was more than expenditures. We've hit that deficit spot on our levy cycle. And that happens to districts. And that's...that happens for Riverside School District. We have levies. The levies generate more money in the beginning. We live within our current means, expenditures grow. And then you get to the point where you're in deficit spending. And then what this is telling a story is, we're going to eventually need an operating levy in the future. This is a comparison from the October five-year forecast to the May one. Real estate taxes are up a little bit, and that's due to delinquencies being paid. The County Auditor and County Treasurer has a special program this year where they're actively going against the foreclosures. So, delinquencies are up. So, now, we have an increase in revenue. Next year, though, it'll go back down because this is a one-time thing that's happening. It's not going to recur. And we had a substantial increase in the delinquencies. Public utility tax is pretty close. The next big one is all operating revenue. And you can see that that decreased $128,000 from the beginning of the school year, what we anticipated. Go to the next up. This is the details of that. We have a decrease in Medicaid reimbursements this year. The Medicaid program in the state of Ohio has changed. And they determined that a lot of...they've overpaid a lot of school districts. So, now we have to pay that money back because they were charging us 88% when it was supposed to be a lower percentage. So, this year, we're not going to... So this year, we're not going to see that revenue, but it will return in the future. We have a decrease in the special ed, a small decrease there. Increase in open enrollment for the foundation, it came in higher than what we anticipated by opening up enrollment in, that's a revenue source. And the other, one of the other big ones is a decrease in shared services, we've lost our, some of our shared services contracts, so we've lost that revenue. And then miscellaneous and other receipts is one of the ones from the Bureau of Workers' Comp, they were substantial refunds that we received, and those programs are over. And the joint finance came in a little bit higher. So if you add all those up debt accounts where there'll change in other revenue. Comparison to expenditures. And this, again, we're comparing from the fall to the, to the end of the year five-year forecast. Personnel is pretty much on, we have the staff, so we do the calculations. Retirement and benefits, there's a change, that's due to we had some arrears payments that we had to do to catch up on STRS and SCRS. The reason that happens is we're on a budget, like per se, when you make your gas payment, and they put you on a budget, we're on, since we're so big, with the state of Ohio, we're on a budget, so we just pay an estimated amount, and then they catch us up. And then also, retirement and benefits proportionally increased with salaries, and then also health insurance went up too this year. Purchased services came in substantially lower than what, what the beginning of the year was, and we're going to, we're going to dig into that. That's actually the biggest one. And then you can see on our financing, now that our PI fund, we have the new PI fund, we're moving financing off, off of the general fund, off of the five-year forecast, and onto the PI funds, we're moving that off. So that's where you can see those substantial movements there. Go to the next slide. So this is the changes in purchased services. Special ed, $104,000 less than what we were projecting. And these are line items that would increase anywhere from 13 to 15% every year, and they're starting to level off for us. Special assessments is also a special ed. Excess cost, open enrollment, this is on our foundation report from the state, and it came in lower, and that one's been on the up, even since I've been here, it started off at $800,000, it hit a peak of 1.3 million. That's coming in lower, and same with community schools. But then along with that foundation, the foundation deduction for scholarships went Some key highlights of the five-year forecast. Real estate tax revenue increased due to delinquency payments, like we just said. Also, we have a valuation increase from $942 million to $972 million. This is all of the value of all of our property in the whole district. And then one would say, wow, that's a big increase. But the only place that we fill that increase on is on our inside millage, which is 4.8 mils, and our substitute levy, which is 4.59 mils. But the other 30 mils that we collect on, they don't fill that increase. So the increase is pretty much, it's minimal. And then state funding is on a trend of increases from the state budgets. We've come off of three budgets where they pretty much held it flat, and now we've come off of two that where it's on an increase, so that's being projected. And real estate revenue still accounts for 65% of our revenue, and the state is 21%. So those are two big, major line items. Key expenditure highlights. Salaries increased from prior years due to current staffing and negotiated agreements, these are the current contracts. Future growth is projected at a 2% for all pay groups across the board. Benefits increased proportionately with salaries, while health insurance premiums increased, this is in the current year, premiums increased anywhere from 13 to 15% depending on the plan, we have four plans that we use. Future projections are proportionate with salaries and favorable outlook on health insurance. We were at the Health Insurance Consortium meeting, and it's pretty favorable, they're hoping that we're going to go back to single-digit increases, so that's projected in our five-year forecast. Purchased services, cost of open enrollment out, community schools and post-secondary option did not increase as much as we originally anticipated, so that was favorable for the district. Go, you can click. Well, you did. Okay, so the conclusions for the five-year forecast for May. The district, again, is funded for the next three years based on current budget, staffing, and the projections that we have. The district is, is deficit spending after four years of spending within current resources. Again, that's, that means current expenditures, when you spend within resources, your expenditures are less than your current resources. And you can say, well, how are we doing that? Well, you have a, we have a beginning balance that we build throughout, so that, that's covering us, the beginning balance is carrying forward and covering us now. The outlook on tax valuation is favorable in comparison to prior revaluations, with decreases in property values that were in the past, we're starting to come out of that, we're starting to have slight increases. And the operating levy cycle is depicting a need for new funds in 2019, or a hybrid combination of reductions in spending. And then the second sheet that I handed out, the blue one, this is our PI budget, and this shows the financing moving over from the general fund, moving on to the PI budget. And it shows that the PI budget has more than enough capacity to absorb that financing. So that's, that's like a work paper now that we're including, and we review that at the Finance Committee.
That's for Chromebooks.
Yes. Chromebooks and buses that we moved back over. So that completes the five-year forecast section. Okay, the Auditor, Auditor of State. Just like Mrs. Grassi mentioned, the Auditor of State released our financial statements, and this is where the auditors come in, they test our financial statements, it's a $50 million budget, and we add up everything, those, all the funds, and they test our accounting procedures, our internal controls, and they're happy to report that there are no items to be brought to the Board's or management's attention, no items noted in a management letter. If there was a management letter, they'd say, we think you should fix this, here's something you should do. We have none of that. So what that, what that means is we have a clean audit, which is the best. So we're in full compliance with the Auditor of State. We also got the Auditor of State Award for exemplary financial reporting in accordance with GAAP for this year. The Auditor, Auditor David Yost, his direct quote is, "Clean and accurate record-keeping are the foundation of good government, and the citizens that we represent in our community are well-served by our effective and accountable financial practices." And that completes my report.
I'd like to thank Dr. Rock for all the work that he put forth in this five-year forecast, simply because I know that we asked you to do this a month earlier than normally that we would, because this is not normally approved till May, however, with a lot of the things that we're looking at in our finances with buildings and facilities and all kinds of things going on in this district, we asked him to prepare this a little bit early. And so I'm happy that you did so, you did a great job, and the finance, the finance meeting that we had was very valuable, very productive, and the Finance Committee dealt into all this data with Dr. Rock, and I appreciate it.
And we lucked out too, because our settlement just came in from the taxes, so, you know, and that's the big, big part for us on $22 million, having that second settlement really helps us with our projections for the end of the year.
And just for other people's benefit who may not be able to see what was presented, when we talked about the, the three years of solvency, that includes this fiscal year, correct?
Yes.
So it's this fiscal year, fiscal year '17, fiscal year '18?
Yes.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, comments are limited to three minutes. Do you have anyone that would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, I'm Kathy Riley, I'm a graduate of Riverside High School and an employee of 30 years. I even did my student teaching here. So I have 42 and a half years of my life in this school district. If they had kindergarten when I was growing up, it would be 43 and a half years. Yes, I'm that old. Currently, I am the Vice President of the RHS Alumni Association. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a letter you received from the Alumni Association last month. Other than a comment to the effect that you would take it under advisement, we have not had a response yet. If you don't recall the letter I'm talking about, I brought some extra copies with me tonight to refresh your memory. Are we okay?
We're good.
Okay. I gave you my background because I have seen many people come and go through the doors of this district, employees and students alike. Some I remember very clearly, some I don't remember, some I wish I didn't remember, and some who will always stand out. One in particular who stands out is George Insco Jr., a former teacher, principal, and superintendent for this district. He raised his four children here and continues to live within the district. He continues to support the activities as well, and is in the know of what's going on. There is very little that slips by him. We have asked in this letter, I mentioned, that the Board seriously consider and act accordingly to name a venue within the district after Mr. Insco. In particular, we mentioned the community fieldhouse. Though he had already retired by the time the fieldhouse was built, many of the individuals involved in the construction of the site were students during his reign and tenure. I bet they will agree with me that he is more than worthy of such an honor. I bet if we took a poll within this room tonight, many of the people here have been influenced by Mr. Insco as well. The school board in the past has made some fine choices to recognize the contributions of former teachers and administrators, Mr. Williams, Mr. Lammuth, Mr. Haddon, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Shaner, but none have had the longevity and presence within the district as Mr. Insco has. Unless you have a bigger plan to recognize and honor Mr. Insco by naming a venue after him, please consider our request now and take positive action as soon as possible. We believe the cost of the district, to the district, would be minimal. We know he would be greatly humbled by this honor, and it would certainly be well-deserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Amy O'Malley, and I am the spokesperson for the Riverside Local Education Association. I am speaking on behalf of RLEA regarding our contract negotiations. One month ago, I echoed the sentiment of Mrs. Harden's statement regarding the value and the appreciation the district holds for our members, and the fervent wish for smooth negotiations. Tonight, a mere days after the exchange of initial proposals, that statement once again rings hollow. The proposal I shared with the RLEA membership is another example of the Riverside Board of Education asking our teachers to fund the district. This Board consistently touts itself for fiscal responsibility and stewardship. Where was that stewardship with the technology department, and all of the joint service money went down route two to Madison? You express desire for unifying the community, but constantly drive these entities apart with actions that are opposite of your words. This initial exchange of proposal is a demonstration that the Board does not value or appreciate the RLEA membership, and what we have done and continue to do for this district. Actions speak louder than words. RLEA stands as one in its desire for a fair and equitable contract, demonstrated of the value of our membership provided to this community that we serve. Thank you.
Does anyone else that would like to speak? All right, that will bring us to our consent agenda. A consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any Board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audits. What is you? Yeah. Sorry. Motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A and B.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on those?
Just wanted to include that now that we've had the Finance Committee, we were talking about the five-year forecast and the PI budget is also a part of that, it's a work paper that goes along with that.
Right. And I need to, I need to agree, that has been very helpful to the Finance Committee, and I think it will end up being very helpful to the Buildings and Grounds Committee as we move forward, as the Finance Committee looks at those two budgets as one, almost, so to speak, even though we only report on the five-year forecast, the general fund, simply because then we can determine how much we have actually available to utilize with our buildings and grounds and budget accordingly. So I think it's been a helpful process, so thank you for putting that out for us. Thank you. Okay. There's no other discussion, can we call a roll?
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mr. Hack?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through I. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just reading.
You're fine.
You're up, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, under personnel, motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through I. Is second? I'll second. Discussion?
No, I'm sorry, I do have a discussion. I'd like to vote on item F separately, please.
Okay.
Seasonal workers.
Correct.
Discussion?
Yes. Can we?
Yep, so we're voting for the consent agenda, less item F.
Less of F.
We pulled F out, and we're going to vote separately afterwards. So this vote right now is for the consent agenda, A through I, without F. Is it okay to call the roll?
Yep.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mr. Hack?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So now we need to vote on F.
Yeah. So resolution approved.
Yeah, we'll read it. We need to vote on F, so just a motion to approve item F.
Motion to approve item F.
I'll second it.
Dr. Rock?
Okay. Mr. Hack?
Nay.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, curriculum programming?
Curriculum program. Motion to approve the items listed on the pro, on the program's consent agenda as recommended by superintendent, items A through G.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Rock, if you'd, Dr. Rock, please call the roll. Sorry.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mr. Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds.
All right. Motion to approve the items listed on the Buildings and Grounds operational consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A and B. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Any discussion?
Yeah, can you clarify item B? That's, I was just, yes, the same.
Yeah, it's a purchase order that's over $15,000. We actually have a blanket purchase order for us for the year, but I thought it'd just be good to just keep it, to be transparent. So this is the fuel purchase for the buses.
Right, this isn't anything, okay, so this isn't anything in addition to the contract that we already have?
No, this is current contract, and it's just a purchase order that's over $15,000.
Thank you.
And we are, we are analyzing, looking into that contract, and Lisa Shurkey and I are going to analyze that further, because now that fuel prices have come down so far, we may not want to lock into that type of contract.
Okay, thank you.
So we're analyzing it, it's currently being analyzed. Does that help?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mr. Hack?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried. Great, so the Board of Education update, if anyone has anything. I would just like to say, I, I really appreciate it, I was at Lammuth on Friday, they had their yearly carnival that AMSCO does, and it was so fun to see our teachers, Mrs. Alexi was the one who won the
one of them, the dunk tank, and Mr. Rotino. It was really fun to see how excited the kids were, to see their teachers. They were lining up, waiting for very specific people to get in that dunk tank. And they were such wonderful sports, and really great about it. Mr. Rotino had quite the, quite the getup going, and the GoPro, if anyone's seen the video yet of him getting into the dunk tank and.
It never gets old.
It doesn't. It never gets old. The kids absolutely loved it.
No, it really does.
At least the water was warm. It was steaming. It was so warm.
From the ocean, trust me, it never gets old.
No. But, you know, I just have to say personally, I, I really appreciate the teachers that take the time out of their day to do that with the kids, because it clearly means a lot to them and to our administrators, and to Mr. Rotino. I'm as long-bolted, and it really means a lot to the kids. And I, I appreciated that as well. I also wanted to say, after Ms. Walker had said about going to Haddon, that I really hope that all of you in the room, I'm glad to see so many teachers, continue to extend those kind of invitations to us on the Board. I, I really love going to these kind of things at the schools. And if there are any opportunities to be in your classrooms with your kids and just to come in, I, anytime you want to send an email to myself, or I'm sure anyone else on the Board will all make an effort to be there, because I really personally enjoy doing those things and being able to celebrate the great things we do in the district with the kids.
I would like to shout out to Mr. Bergerfell and the choir, who did their really awesome choir concert last week. They did Carmina Barana, which, if anybody got an opportunity to see it, it was really, really, really well-done. Hired orchestra members and whatever. It was, it was just a very, very nice concert. That's a lot of work. It's a, it's a very lengthy piece. And they did 25 selections from that lengthy piece of work. So that was a really great concert. There are also, next week is Band Week, so if anybody's interested, please come to five nights of band concerts. I'll be there with three. So, enjoy me. Do you have anything else? All right, then, moving on. I am going to make a motion to adjourn if I have a second, please.
I'll second.
Dr. Rock, call the roll, please.
Mr. Miley?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mr. Hack?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye. Motion carried. Work session on May 10th, and our next meeting on May 24th. Thank you all for coming.